A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, where they nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Reverend Wilkie, for the flag?
So, as I do this invocation, I have one thought before I pray. Psalms 111, verse 10. The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. A good understanding of all those who practice it, his praise endures forever. So, we thank you, Father, for this group of men and women who have the heart to come and serve and see that the affairs of Walton Village are run properly and with surety and justice. So, we pray for each of the, for the mayor, for the trustees, for each department head, we ask your blessing and favor upon them as they go about to do their duties with wisdom and sincerity. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. First thing on the agenda is public input. If anybody here wants to have an input, not, we'll move on. The second thing would be the abstracts, payment of invoices. Everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. We need a motion.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
You have to vote today, also.
Apartment heads, Shane.
Good job here. Everybody get my report this month?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions? We had to pump down both clarifiers because they were clogging up with rags. It's important that people do not flush those things.
To the tune of bucket load of, off your backhoe, correct?
Yes.
So, a bucket load and a half came out of two clarifier pipes.
Wow.
So, it's considerable. What was going on was starting to slow the flow down to the clarifiers, so we're starting to get flow imbalance. So, luckily enough, they caught it before. We had too big of an issue, but yeah.
But it puts a lot of pressure on the pumps and everything else, right?
Yeah, it's, you know, the return pumps, how often are you cleaning those?
Yeah, a couple of times a month.
You know, and this is wear and tear on those, and they're extremely expensive pumps, so if we can not, you know, if people can stop flushing it, that would be fantastic.
Isn't that offensive, that gate that you put over the fence or whatever you want to call it, the screen, I guess you'd call it, it's very expensive, right?
Yeah, it's about $800,000 if you wanted to put one in.
Okay.
Or, you know, four more, it depends, the way prices are going.
Yeah, it might over a million dollars.
That's installed price?
What's that?
That's installed, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure which company Brian had looked into for us, but we can get that to everybody again if you want. Yeah, it was 750 then, so I think it's, you're probably closer to eight, 800 now, you know, just again throwing in rough numbers.
No, we don't want to, but I mean, if it's, if we're gonna keep on destroying the motors and everything in the red, it's gonna cost us more than what it's for buying the screens.
Is there any money out there for wastewater permits?
Yeah, I mean, that was, the village put in an application this summer to EFC to go towards a plant-wide upgrade.
Any idea when we may get some kind of response about that and when they may do something with it?
Our score makes it eligible for subsidized funding to do things like putting the screen in, redoing the clarifiers, the digesters, some of the original equipment at the facility.
How much is the match on that?
Right now, it's a 25% grant, 75% loan through those programs. So, that is, you know, an option for consideration.
You know, the original clarifiers and thickeners, they were from the 70s, 75, and they're still operating, so.
But that was, it's something we could pull out of that if we, if we got any grant money. You said you applied for a grant?
We listed the project to update a lot of the equipment and put in a screen with the state, and that project was scored, and the score makes us eligible, above the threshold that makes us eligible for funding. So, the next step is to do a formal application to formally request the money. So, because we've been on the list for a number of years and we were below the threshold, so even if we did all the applications and all the legwork, we wouldn't have been eligible, so we rescored the project and now we're above the threshold because we did a larger scope project. Instead of just doing one thing that would solve one issue, it was a plant-wide project, and we're above the scoring thresholds, but it is a grant and loan match.
You said 75% loan?
Yeah.
And you said, when do you, when do you think they'll release the results?
There are, I mean, we know we're eligible for it now. We have to decide if we want to do the full application and the reports and everything to substantiate a request, and that will probably be in the next spring.
Okay, so the deadline is next spring?
Yeah.
Okay. No, it's okay. I don't know, Shane, did you have anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Um, any news on the sampling structure that we had talked about with, with lactalis?
No, they haven't.
No.
No.
No response.
Reason being, when we're looking at some of our samples that are coming in and results, they're considerably high. We're not seeing that reflected in reporting of spills as well as split samples. Not always, but from time to time. So, it would be nice to have that ability to take samples directly from there to a contract lab, outside lab, so we have a third-party review basically of what's coming into the wastewater plant. We're getting high phosphorus, this last sample, high loading. That was on the second, if I remember correctly?
That was a spill on the second, and our normal sample was taken the sixth.
Yeah, so on the second, we had a really high CBOD coming in, high, high TKN, which is total caldol nitrogen, a high phosphorus as well as suspended solids. And then on, a week later, was it, Shane? Hopefully, yeah, around the sixth, so just a few days later, again, high B, high COD coming in and high phosphorus. So, we'll have to see if we can capture, if we can get the sampling.
How much is that kind of cost, roughly?
Well, we're gonna look at it again because of its location, and we'd have to have electric and water run down to there. We could do some consideration of maybe putting something behind the curry well and running a sample line through with a peristaltic pump, which would actually pump it up, and we could have a drain line back to that manhole. But by the time you do a structure, you're electric and what have you. Brian said around $200,000.
Holy shit.
Well, if you're gonna, you're gonna have, if we do anything down at that, the manhole, that's the last manhole from Lactalis into the village, you're gonna have to put in a road. Right now, it's seeded, but for them to maintain it for plowing and what have you, and it's, what was it, 750 feet, I believe, that they'd have to run electric down to and water and, so.
Yeah, it gets flooded down there.
Yeah, and it gets flooded, so that's why, again, if we did something along, that we could essentially, right next to the curry well or attach it, although, you know, there's ramifications of the fact that you bring wastewater over towards the wellhouse, I don't know if that would be a concern, being that they're gonna be basically separate structures, but still, that's something we'd have to look further into.
I mean, they did, they've done a project down there to mitigate the flooding at the plant.
Right.
Not downstream from it, they haven't done it.
No, right. Yeah, and they just did all that stream work right there, and it's.
It takes care of the wellhouse, but.
Right.
That's where it is.
Yes.
Well, we're gonna have to look into something because, I mean, we're not getting accurate reports and we're getting all these spills all the time. I mean, I just look at your thing, one, two, three, four, five, they had six spills in September. I mean, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah. And we did, we did send them the letter.
Yeah. And we had five spills in August. I mean, it's not that we're not getting, we're getting a lot of spills and it's a lot of, causing a lot of issues.
Causing chemicals.
Chemical costs is like true rule.
And on this one sample, it wasn't on the day that they reported the spill either, which was the day we had the high COD and phosphorus either, it was not on the day that they reported the spill.
And, yeah, and they haven't paid us for, for the spills, correct, Jody?
No.
They haven't paid since, what, November? Before that?
Yeah, we got spills back going to November, they haven't paid for.
And that's going right on to the taxpayers.
Yeah, right. So, they were sent the letter regarding that, so hopefully we'll get some response.
All right. But again, we'll, we'll continue to look at that.
Yeah.
We worked with Butch, he walked down, the same thing, his concern, same as Deck, it floods down there.
Yeah.
So, you know, elevation and then probably it's in the floodway, so.
There's no other place to put it?
Well, again, that's why we were thinking of the curry well, and we were able to put in a few conduits, if you will, so we could run.
Right.
A drain line back and then have a sample line coming down from there. I mean, a peristaltic pump will draw that far, so it's a doable location.
Okay.
It's just overall cost, so.
Right.
Overall, I think that's pretty much it.
Is there anything else from you?
That's all I have.
Okay, we'll wait to see, we hear from them, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. She's right here, code, Josh.
He had something on his report, though.
Yeah, I've got, yeah, it's got there.
You got it?
Yep. Needs permission to list the 2017 Cub Cadet Zero Turn Mower as surplus equipment for auction. I'd make the motion, we grant permission to list.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else from him, or is that it?
Hmm.
Okay, Josh.
Good evening.
Good evening.
See, September slowing down for projects, kind of wrapping up everything that was open, and pretty much now I'm starting to do the fire inspections, I'll show them next month, but you guys got any questions with anything? No? All right.
I think it's supposed to be, seems to be going pretty good.
Yep, so, all right.
Has there been any building permit application for the Thomas Tire Barn area yet?
No, nothing yet. Of course, we'll have to go through planning and development permit and everything for that, but yeah, nothing yet, so just waiting, so eagerly.
Thank you. Bill?
Good evening.
Good evening. Do have a couple of things to highlight, asshole, tonight.
No.
Makes it easy.
Okay.
We can ask.
You can ask, right?
The INI study, we've been talking about for a while, the village was awarded funding last year, I think that was their third try. We applied, the village applied for $100,000, they were awarded, we were awarded 30. The paperwork is through to allow that project to start, so what that will entail is to bring in a company that has a camera system to put in the sewer lines out in the streets, under the roads, and look for water that shouldn't be there, you know, either leaking pipes or sump pumps and that kind of thing, so we would look to retain that company to come in and do those inspections, and then there'd be videos and reports, and we would summarize those and say, this is what we found, and the fix is to replace a manhole, to line a pipe, to patch this, whatever it may be, based on the inspections, and then that would be a basis to apply for funding to make the fix. So, we would ask the village to consider signing an agreement with Delaware Engineering in the amount of $36,000 to conduct the inflow and infiltration study. 30,000 of that is the grant from EFC, and the way they disperse that is they fund the first 15,000 outside of the project, the work is completed, you show that you've incurred those costs, the report is prepared and sent to EFC, and once they approve the report, then they wire the village the second 15,000. And then there's a $6,000 local match or local share to, you know, get the 30. So, it is needed, you know, flows in the system have increased over the last several years, and there's water coming in that shouldn't be, which translates to costs to run the facility that are borne by folks in the village, and there's, there's no payback on that.
Who needs a motion, person?
I can motion, we authorized, we signed an agreement with Delaware Engineering for professional services and blah, blah, blah.
Blah, blah, blah.
It's all in there.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He has a third to a half, he said, in the report.
Yeah, depending on the weather and the time of year, and there's a lot of water that comes into the system that shouldn't be, and it has, you track it over the course of years, and it's prepped up. You know, in a perfect world, the only water that's coming in is the water that's pumped out of the wells of people using their house and their business, and then, you know, Lactalis, they have their own wells, and then their wastewater comes in. So, the water that's pumped out of the wells, the water Lactalis, you know, puts to the wastewater plant, that should be all the water that comes in, and there's a lot more than that. So, in order to meet all the permits and comply with the regulations, it makes that more difficult when there's stuff coming in that shouldn't be.
It's a small step to solve a big issue.
Yes, sir.
It cuts down what we get from other plants because it dilutes everything.
Yes. The other item we talked about a little bit before is kind of a system-wide project that we've applied for funding, did the start of an application for funding. The village has scored here to do a project to replace the clarifiers and digesters, to put in screens, to update a lot of the facilities that have been in place for a number of years since the plant was built. We were 44, the funding threshold is 34, so we're above that threshold. The next step is to do an engineering report to say, these are all the things that we want, that we need at the facility, you know, and give accurate costs to do an environmental review, which everything would be in the fence, you know, we're not clearing a whole hillside, but you have to do an environmental review and an application to EFC to fund that project, so it's something that probably funds would need to be budgeted for to incur the costs of doing those applications and reports. Switching gears a little bit, on the water side, we are finalizing the plans, working with the DPW to get plans up to the health department, so we can be in a position to replace water lines throughout the streets. We're also looking to make repairs at the water tanks and at the one curry well, kind of behind McDonald's. Separate from that, the village is seeking to use the ARPA funding that was awarded to the village in particular, but throughout the country. The village is using your ARPA funding to go towards the well replacement, to replace a 1960s vintage well, working through that process. We put bids out last month, unfortunately, we only got one bid back. We sent bids to, or bid specs to five contractors, two that were too busy, one bid received, and two more that didn't, didn't respond. The number was higher than what we have liked to seen and with no other comparison. We would, I think, look to rebid that and try to show that we're more flexible time-wise, you know, if we need to wait until next spring to have work done, that we can get more competitive bids and it fits better than our budgets. You know, I think that is prudent to do at this stage, based on the, only receiving one bid for the project, so we would ask the board to consider authorizing the clerk to rebid that project.
Make the motion, we rebid the project for the new water well installation test.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The only other highlight this month, the highway garage project is starting this month. The contractor will be on-site next week, materials are on-site, the steel roofing, the trusses, they called in their dig save notice so they can start excavation next week for the foundations. I know DPW's been getting a lot of their parts and pieces lined up to do their parts of the project.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Chief.
Everybody got the report?
Yes, you're getting good at emailing.
I am, right?
[laughing].
It's not my strong suit, for sure. So, anybody got any questions on anything, or?
That's clear.
It's pretty, yeah, I don't want to say the word, but it's pretty. The one, the one issue we did have this month on the 17th, we had a slew of vehicle break-ins again, and I want to touch on that real quick.
On Burton Street, right?
Yeah, Burton Street and down in the East Street. So, it's really important that everybody locks their vehicles, that's just that we don't live, long time ago, where.
Those days are gone.
Front doors open and stuff like that. I would highly recommend everybody lock their vehicles at night. We dealt with about 10 complaints the next morning. We also have a very good person that we're looking at right now as a suspect. I'm asking if anybody else had anything that was taken out of their vehicles, other than the 10 that we already have, if they can come down to the police station and make a report of what they had taken out of their vehicles, and approximately what time. We have videos and stuff like that, so we feel pretty good on a, on a possible person to hold accountable for the break-ins this time, unlike last time where we didn't have a lot of evidence. So, so I make sure we get everything covered before we apply for our warrant for arrest. Other than that, it was a pretty even-killed month, so.
We had two guys out, were the two officers out for training?
Yeah, we, so Katie Mitchell and Zach Finch went to the training, Devin was unable to go, he was out sick this last week, so they went to the training and then Delhi for the evidence.
Okay.
That's pretty much it.
Okay, that's all we got. Bill, have anything else for the chief? No?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So, the other thing too, I was able to locate a vehicle. It's a 2021, for, it's just like the same vehicle that we have, it's at 34995, and I talked to the dealership and they're willing to deliver it to us free from West Minneapolis, Minnesota is where it is right now.
Well.
So, they're willing to deliver that to us. It's, it's very difficult right now to obtain any vehicle. Again, you know, the dealership we were dealing with when we acquired this last vehicle, they stopped my order, and Ford stopped the production of the 2022s. They wanted to start the 23s at a 25% increase, which was very expensive, I thought, so I was able to locate this vehicle, called the dealership, and was able to put a hold on it for right now, so.
We've already authorized the money, right?
Yeah.
Right, I just need authorization so that I can actually cut the check.
I'm making the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep, it's an aye down here.
Okay.
Force, force.
Chances of getting one other, that's pretty slick.
I'm telling you, Mr. Doig, it's been very challenging to obtain any kind of police vehicle at all, they're just, they show them on.
It's just not, it's everything in general, I mean, I'm talking to the people that told you, open up a business, they had a postponer for a couple of weeks, they can't get the stuff, can't get the materials, so it's just, everything is just.
Still, I think it's still that COVID, kind of everything was shut down and trying to build back up to it, seems to be the issue, but the vehicles, even though they, I can't tell you how many dealerships I've called, and I don't even remember, I don't even know who I'm talking to sometimes when they call me back, so, but they all, they're like, oh, no, they're all spoken for, they're all taken, so I got right on this one and was able to get it, so.
Okay, good, good.
I guess that's it.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, trustee reports, start with you.
All right. So, I'm also Parks and Theater this evening. The fall sports season is in full swing at Austin Lincoln Park. We'd like to remind all drivers to be extra vigilant in looking out for our young athletes who are running around all over the park. Anyone who is interested in having input into next year's summer activities at Austin Lincoln Park and at the Walton Village Pool are invited to attend a meeting at Village Hall in the boardroom on Monday, October 17th at 3:30 PM. In attendance, Parks trustee Nathan Jameson, pool supervisor Brian Spregg, and Walton Mayor Ed Snow. We look forward to a lively and productive collaboration of ideas to keep our summer parks program moving and moving in a positive direction. This month, the historic Walton Theater, we look forward to free coffeehouse performance from Emily Hutchinson and Friends on Sunday, October 16th at 6:00 PM, as well as a concert by acoustic Edelgard presented by Music on the Delaware. That is Saturday, October 29th, 7:30 PM. This month, the theater will be showing All the Lonely People with producer panel following presentation on Tuesday, October 25th at 6:30 PM. This event is free and open to the public. Please call Delaware County Office for the Aging, 607-832-5750 for more information. Thank you and have a wonderful October submitted respectfully, Nathan Jameson. Now to my report. So, I've got a handout for everyone. It's here. If you want to pass it down, Mr. Doig.
You got this.
So, this is the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. It's a program being offered by New York State to assist people at a variable income level to assist them with overdue water bills, wastewater bills. So, what does this do? The benefits are based on actual amount of drinking water and/or wastewater arrears up to a maximum of 2,500 for drinking water or wastewater provider, but 5,000 of drinking water and wastewater services are combined, and that's per household. Benefits are paid directly to the households, drinking water and/or wastewater vendors. So, the village would be acting as a vendor in this case, in this program. Eligibility benefits are based on income, household size, household includes US citizen, US national qualified alien amount owed to drinking water and/or wastewater. Primary applicants must provide proof of identity, proof of residence, documentation of earned and unearned income, drinking water, wastewater, combined drinking water, wastewater bill, listing their permanent and primary residence. Those are some of the application requirements. And, let's see, so what we need to do, or what I would recommend you do, is that the village agree to become a vendor, and that would allow people who are eligible to get assistance, and from what I've researched in this program, that assistance is submitted by the comptroller's office, and those payments are submitted electronically to the vendor, in this case, the municipality. So.
Yeah, I called up on that, too. I spoke to two people down there, and people have to understand, if we do this program, the village has nothing to do with as far as them preparing the form, the people have to call up that 831 number themselves, they have to give all the information out, and if they are approved for it, the state will mail the check to the village to pay their bill, but they won't be getting the check. but they won't be getting the check, so. That's the only thing that we have to do as far as the village goes, just accept the check and pay it.
And, you know, the economy is just all over the place. I think it's a good idea to give people an opportunity to secretly, especially seniors.
But it's based on two, low income, too.
Yeah. If there's a threshold, they have to meet.
Yes.
So if there's any other discussion, questions?
Are you gonna?
Yeah, I would make the motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the vendor agreement to participate in the New York State Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. And I would also recommend that we send this to our attorney so he can review it, pending any, anything unusual, just that he has reviewed it. I over it.
You second it?
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Dick, you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
We said, we finished that one already. Okay, uh, mayor's report. I really don't have much to say, except for all the projects that are going on are still going. The bowling alley, there's a bunch of, there's a few stores that are coming in place there. They're all still working on it, they're waiting. It's taking a little bit longer sometimes because they're waiting for material to come in, ever since it's COVID, we're having a problem. But there is one new store that might be, that is supposed to be coming in. It's going to be a micro brewery that's coming in over there. They, they already spoke to the owner, they're very interested, so. But when I see it, I'll know for sure, but they, they said, yes, they're coming, so that's, all the stores over there will be full. I, I spoke to the guy from Joe and Vinnie's Pizza Ria, Joe Mango, the other day. He showed what he's gonna do, he's gonna have a dining room and pizza ria and all that kind of. So he's all excited about coming over here, so that's good. I spoke to the guy from the depot, which is the old CNC feed is, but it's gonna be the karate plate. He's waiting for his material to come in, too, it's gonna be delayed for a couple of weeks, so. But it's gonna happen, it's just waiting for the material. And I call up regarding the diner, Papa's Diner, which is gonna be, is gonna be opening up. They're still waiting for a few more things to be, to be in, so in the next few weeks, they'll all start opening up. So we're, I think, I think we're still going in a very good direction. That's all I have. And our number six, we got a few parades coming up, Halloween, Veterans Day, and Christmas. The Halloween and Veterans, we got the letters already on them. The Halloween, I mean, the Christmas, I know that we're gonna get one, because that, we usually do that the Friday after Thanksgiving every year. So we can do them all together, right?
Sure.
Yeah. I make a motion, we approve the parade permits, provided they approve, provide proof of insurance. Yep.
Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. The only other thing I want to say about Halloween coming up, I want everybody in the village to be, tell the kids and they would be extra prepared. There's a lot of this fentanyl stuff going around, it hasn't hit us yet, but you never know. And they have these little small pills that look like candies, and, and you die from it. So I would suggest very strongly that parents tell the kids, don't take any loose candies or anything from any houses, they come, gotta be packaged and, and check it out themselves first, because we don't want to have any kind of incident, so. And Halloween will be on the actual day that it is, I think it's Monday, the 31st. So we, we voted last year that the man on Halloween will be on the day that it is on, falls on. Other than that, I think that's it. Unless anybody else has, you have nothing else, right?
No.
That's it, everybody, thank you very much for coming, have a nice night.
Have a good night.
You too.